January 18th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to Order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
One of those old Japanese movies.
I do not have any announcements. And is there anybody here for anything not currently posted on our agenda? Seeing as none, I'm going to let the other two boards call themselves to order. Heather?
Yeah.
Okay, so Finance Committee, let's just go around and say who's here. So Dick Vanderburg, then Phil, why don't you go next?
Joe Gogolinski, Finance Committee.
Lynn Mazzoli, Finance Committee.
Phil Landry, Finance Committee.
Howard D'Amico, Finance Committee.
Oh, Howard.
Howard.
You need to mute. So I guess you're all that. So we're calling our meeting to order at 7:11 PM, Tuesday, January 18th.
18.
So we're coming to order. Okay, so may I, I think?
No.
Heather.
So I'll call the School Committee meeting. Heather Moore, here.
Paul Viera, Superintendent.
Matt Wojcik for the town. So that's the Negotiations Subcommittee forum. So the missing Lisa Warmer is important, correct?
Okay. So with all of these in, I think I have to wait for the other two committees to go to executive session first.
Really, doesn't matter, but it is your meeting, so you should go in last. So you need a motion to go into executive session for purposes of discussion.
Okay.
Collective bargaining.
And whether or not you have to, whether or not they will convene after, correct? And then have to be followed.
Okay. All right, so we're good, we're good, we're good.
Mute your mic on the last one.
You got a, you got a mic over your head, so you don't.
Oh, I don't need my mic.
No.
No. Okay, gotcha. All right, so we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the ongoing negotiations. So one of you pin conference would be willing to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, made by Phil, seconded by?
I'll second the motion, Phil.
Harold Valinsky. So we need a roll call vote, so I'll begin. Dick Vanderburg, aye.
Joe Gogolinski, aye.
Phil Landry, aye.
Lynn Mazzoli, aye.
Howard D'Amico, aye.
Okay, motion carried. So we're now in executive session. And Matt, you have the floor?
No.
No.
Are we going back to?
Heather's got to go into executive session.
Are we not going back to open session?
You don't need to.
Okay. All right, Heather.
You begin.
So I need to make a motion for the School Committee to go into executive session.
And not to return to open session.
And not to return to open session. All those who vote aye, so Heather Moore, aye.
I'll second it.
I'll second it, so it carries. Thank you.
So Heather Moore, aye. Paul Viera, aye.
Matt Wojcik, aye.
Okay.
Now the board has.
So.
You got to get Tim to make one of his.
Tim, do you want to make the motion?
Sure. I make a motion that this Board of Selectmen go into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining, and then we will return to the regularly scheduled January 18th agenda.
Seconded. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Uh, Tim, did you have anything else that you wanted to add before we go on voting?
Thank you. A good reminder, having an abundance of caution and on the advice of Attorney General's Ethics Committee, because I think my sister-in-law is a member of the negotiating team, I will be accusing myself from all discussions relating to this matter. So I will see you guys at the end of this executive session and see you at the beginning of the next.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. Good night, all. See you.
All right, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Davis, aye.
Okay. So we are going to skip over Agenda Item Number Two, uh, which was to discuss the STM articles, because we don't have any as of yet to discuss. Brings us to Number Three, which is a letter of commitment in support of EDA grant application. Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
So, and just to recap, we're pursuing an EDA federal grant for the extension of the sewer to the Skennell buildings on the other side of 146 and to upgrade the water mains on Northeast Main. Um, Skennell is stepping up to help to pay for some of the engineering as they've been requested to. But EDA must have a voted firm commitment from the Board of Selectmen that says we understand the 20% matching requirement and are committed to covering it with available resources. And we cannot use federal funds to lever the matching, to leverage a, can't use federal funds to leverage matching requirements, so we need to use the Mass Works as a match. And the amount of Mass Works requested is 828,313 out of the $3 million grant. About about it?
Yes. So you'd be directing me to write the letter.
So I make a motion to authorize Matt to write a letter in, uh, of commitment in support of the EDA grant application.
And we need the number.
I will second that motion.
What's the number?
828,313.
The number and the source. Mass Works funds not to exceed 828,313.
So amend my motion to include that the Mass, Mass Works request will not exceed And zero cents.
Second.
All right. And is this the one where we want to put a hold on this?
Well, you got to vote it first.
All right. So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Stone, aye. Davis, aye.
Now, in order to make it easier on everybody, I would ask the board to authorize Chairman Morse to sign on its behalf
on this particular.
To sign the letter. I'm asking the board if you would, if you could authorize the chairman to sign on your behalf.
And, and so I'd make the motion to allow the chairman to sign, sign the letter of commitment on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in light of the inability to gain all the signatures quickly.
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Stone, aye. Davis, aye.
All right. Is there anything else that we want to?
I'll go after you, Tim. You're being a bit.
I think we can skip the complexity.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get it in when I can.
You're doing good, Tim. You're doing good.
Okay. So that takes care of Item Number Three. Uh, Number Four is to review and ratify the CMRPC contract for group purchase of COVID-19 rapid testing kits using ARPA funds and possible votes.
So rapid testing became a very, all of a sudden.
Rapid.
Big issue, rapidly. A lot of this has to do with the difficulty of getting an at-home rapid test from a typical pharmacy or other source at a reasonable price. And to add to the complexity, the United States federal government and the Massachusetts state government have both made very large purchases. The notion is they want us to be using rapid tests, especially if we're symptomatic, to ascertain whether you have the flu, whether you have COVID, whether you need to quarantine for how long and when you can get out in light of the spike of the Omicron variant all across the country. So we have two different issues as the Town of Douglas. The first is that our allotment coming through the Department of Public Health has typically been about 300 tests a month. And we really could use a lot more. We've used a little bit more than 100, 150 a week. Um, testing people who feel at the need it, testing employees, mostly testing members of the public. And if we can't get them at a reasonable price, this, when DPH shuts off its supply, we will not have a supply, and then we'll have to pay a very high price. The state government went out and negotiated statewide contracts with several vendors who produce tests and accepted their price and their delivery schedules. The prices ranged from $5 a test to roughly $12 or almost $15 a test from the various vendors. The Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, of which the town is a member, is able to get us, you know, a couple hundred tests with leftover grant money. But then they said, came to us and said, we would like to do a group purchase because of the quantity that Worcester County can probably command. They're likely to get a good price, we're also likely to get favorable shipping. Because you put these things on a pallet and unload them on a pallet, you're going to go move a lot of product really quickly and can always break them up. But we want to be in the hunt for a large order. So about 15 communities got together with not much more than 48 hours' notice. And I was approached on behalf of Douglas. I knew that Webster had already made a large purchase in Uxbridge. And without the ability to call the board together in a reasonable time and post the meeting, we had to make a decision because we were approached with this late in the day Wednesday, and the deadline was Friday at 10:00 AM. They said, sign us up for $15,000 worth of tests. We confirmed that the spending is eligible for ARPA funds, so it won't come out of the taxpayer, it'll come out of the federal allotment of that $2.7 million that we got from the United States Treasury. This is an allowable use. So we went to CMRPC and said, we would like to commit $15,000 to get rapid tests, and we would use them for our employees, but most importantly, we have a long queue, a backlog, especially of senior citizens in towns who have reached out through Patrice Rousseau at the Adult Social Center to try to get a test, because they can't find him anywhere. They want to visit family, they want to do things. So we were budgeting $15 a test, because that was the worst-case scenario. So that was about 1,000 tests, and that would last us a couple months. The other piece of this, so that's the contract I'm asking you to ratify tonight, so not to confuse the two pieces. Why don't we deal with one at a time? So that's, I went ahead, I signed a piece of paper. CMRPC went to the statewide contract, and lo and behold, the vendor that's offering tests at $5 apiece, not 15, is the winning bid. So right now, it looks like we'll have a large quantity of tests. We'll be able to take care of people. Being mindful of the fact that the United States government, through President Biden and the United States Postal Service, is making four tests per residence available. You have to go on the federal website, sign up your address, and the United States Postal Service will deliver you two kits, and each kit has two tests in it. So that's four from the federal government. If you have kids in the public schools, or if you are a public school teacher or a public school employee, Charlie Baker's 26 million tests are largely going to be used to keep the schools open and to test kids and staff in the school system. So there's going to be a lot of tests around. So before you come to the fire station or the Adult Social Center to get a free test, just take advantage of your federal tests. If you're involved in the school system, try to work it through that angle as well. So that's, I didn't want to spend any ARPA funds without ratification from the Board of Selectmen. I figured, see the position I was in, it was a little bit difficult. I didn't want to break open meetings and poll the members.
You did the right thing.
So I'm hoping we did the right thing. So that's the contract I'm looking to ratify. The other piece of this that I do want people to be aware of is that we are also a health insurer. We self-insure those employees who are enrolled in our health plan. The Town of Douglas pays the claims. That's what self-insurance means. When the federal mandate came down that insurance companies must cover the cost of COVID tests, that means that our health plan was on the hook to provide our members, plan members, eight tests a month with potentially no upward cap on the cost per test. So if our members went out and they went to a popular retail pharmacy and they spent 20 bucks a test or $25 a test, and they presented us with an invoice, we would have to pay that claim. So we met as a trust, the Town of Webster, the W. Chelton School District, and the Town of Douglas, and said, why don't we, as a group, buy tests to give to our members for free? Because if we spend $5 or $9 per test, we could be saving a lot of money for the trust fund. It was, it's a smart business move. So as a group, we made a second purchase. It's the same quantity. It's about $15,000 to give our plan members four free tests, to supplement the four they're getting from the federal government. So those Douglas Town employees who are members of our health plan have the opportunity to get eight free tests. They would get four from the federal government and four from their insurance plan. And if it's still necessary, if this particular surge has longer legs than people think it does, we would have to go back at it. So we didn't buy too, too many. We bought $15,000 worth. But that came out of the trust fund, out of money the town has already put into its insurance program. So there's no taxpayer expense there. No new taxpayer expense. I'm not really looking for ratification of that, I'm looking for the, the purchase on behalf of the town, which is what I'm here for.
So you're just looking for a motion to review and ratify the CMRPC contract for COVID-19 testing?
To ratify.
To ratify, because there's nothing to review, because we don't have nothing in front of us.
Yeah.
So make a motion to ratify the contract for the group purchase of the COVID-19 rapid test kits using the ARPA funds.
Timmy, you're muted.
Of course I, of course I apologize. I would say that's a good motion, and I'll be glad to second it.
Motion's been made by Mike, seconded by Tim. Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Stone, aye. Davis, aye.
Excellent. Uh, next is to accept the donation from Skennell Properties in support of economic development costs. A town accountant to establish a gift account and possible votes.
So Mr. Chairman, this is one of the more arcane statutes of the state of Massachusetts. It has to deal with how do we work with a private partner on a development project? What we do is we accept their, their match or their contribution to the project costs as a quote-unquote donation. The donation has to be accepted by quote-unquote "an officer of the town" or one of its bodies. Under that language, I think the town administrator could accept it. What I'm going to ask you to do is a little bit different tonight. I want to establish a work pattern where the water commissioners know that they have to regularly deal with these donations from both Skennell and CRG. And that they become, the superintendent is accountable to his commission for the use of those funds, and that he's collecting those funds and for project updates. After it's accepted, however, it still cannot be spent until it is approved by the Board of Selectmen. You have the final say. In this case, we've already taken in the check. It's for $33,900. It is for Stantec Engineering, associated specifically with a part of the project that extends water from the Shell Station out to the Skennell Project on the other side of 146. So the donation was made with that restriction on it. It will only be used for engineering, for their project. The commissioners are scheduled to meet Thursday morning. That was the fastest they could get together. What I'm asking for you to do tonight is if you would make an approval contingent upon Water Commission's support, so that when they take their vote, we'd be able to pay this bill without any further meetings or further process. Because it's a little bit time, time-sensitive. Are there any questions about what I'm asking for?
So.
Money was again?
$33,900. So in future, what will happen is the commission will interact with the private partners and establish what the contribution's going to be. The check will come into the town, we'll do the same thing, we'll put it in the vault. The water commissioners will accept the donation on behalf of the town, and then come to the Select Board to ask for approval to spend it for a bill. It's been submitted. That's the way it's, it's got to work. This is a, it's a first time for everything. This is the first time we've been through this, collecting money from outside parties for engineering. So the check came in before the water commissioners could meet. They're meeting us tonight. I don't want to hold them up another two weeks. So that's where I'm at.
So the number five, it says, accept donation from Skennell. You're actually asking to authorize the, the donation to be used to pay for the engineering costs.
Yeah.
Ahead of the approval, that's going to accept the donation on Thursday morning.
Yeah.
So you just want a motion to authorize the use of those funds contingent on the approval from the Water Department to accept the donation to pay for the engineering costs associated with the Skennell Project.
Yeah.
My head's getting better.
Yeah.
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made by Mike, seconded by Hal. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Stone, aye. Davis, aye.
Excellent. All right. Last is, well, the next item is the Personnel Policies and Procedures Amendment Regarding Military Leave, which is the final reading and possible vote. Has there been any changes since the previous two readings?
None.
Seeing as none, I will accept a motion to approve the Personnel Policies and Procedures Amendment as it pertains to military leave.
I'll second.
Is that a motion, Tim?
I will second it, Kevin's.
Oh, all right. So, so move for Kevin, and then you can second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Stone, aye. Davis, aye.
Excellent. Next is Personnel Policies and Procedures Amendment for the vehicle use. It's a second reading. No changes since first reading?
Yeah. Well, there should be one change in there.
Did we make it right away? Nope, we didn't.
All right. So under, um, the C Rule Governing Use, Number Two, family members shall not be transported in town vehicles. That would be non-employees, we're going to add to that.
Yeah. Uh, under two, C two?
Yes.
I remember it now. I thought we didn't.
I knew it.
Okay. Any other changes other than that one?
No, no.
Mike, was that the change that we suggested at the last meeting?
Yes, it was, Tim. Yes. Yep. Just so there's not a conflict with the different departments we have that have multiple family members.
Okay. Should we have nothing else on that one? Excellent. Moving right along to.
Second.
Go ahead, Hal.
It's the second reading.
No, I, I think, you haven't changed it since the proposal we discussed at the last meeting, correct? Everything else the same?
Yeah, this is the second of three readings.
Yeah.
Okay. Brings us to Item Number Eight, Soldiers Field Use Revised Movie Contract and Possible Votes. Anything different in the contract?
On this particular one, I don't know. This is the final contract, because it was sent to us. Did Attorney Bowen get a chance to weigh in to make sure that those changes were in fact?
I have not heard back from him regarding the changes.
Okay. So why don't we table this until we can get Attorney Bowen's review?
Do we have the issue at the last?
I think that's prudent. Kevin, the last, uh, last time we met, um, the question almost in jest about what rating this movie be if it were to be rated. The director, so I checked on that, because I thought it was an interesting question. Uh, the director thinks maybe PG. PG 13 maybe was, because of some dugout language, but, uh, that's what we learned.
So it's going to be a PG movie?
Well, if it were to be rated, I don't think this probably raises to the motion picture rating agency. But if it does, he thinks a PG, maybe a PG 13.
Fine.
For what it's worth, it's not much, but.
Is Soldiers Field rated PG 13, do you think, itself, or?
It's, in its best moment, it's PG. It may sometimes venture, you know, venture into PG 13, or maybe even with some language, some radar, but by and large, it's.
Or anything, huh?
None of that.
Behind the bleachers or anything? Nope.
Don't give them any ideas.
All right.
Before we move off that, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there, is this time-sensitive?
No, because the filming's supposed to be done in October.
October 22.
Yeah. Well, just they have their planning, too. And the last time we met, we still hadn't heard back from the town council, so that's the only reason I'm asking that question.
So Lisa, could you?
Yeah, I'll follow up with them tomorrow.
A gentle reminder.
That's all.
Mike, it's a good question. I don't think it's, it's going to make or break what he's doing. We have a nice relationship with him, and it's the wintertime. And although he was down, you know, down there earlier this week, or early this month, I should say. Nothing that's in here would, or nothing that we haven't executed yet is limiting him from doing what he needs to do.
Well, we don't want to take too long, because then, next thing you know, it'll be rated TVMA, because of Hal's suggestions that he's offered.
Legendary suggestion.
Could be a moneymaker for the town.
Well, it's not in the Adult Entertainment District, Hal. I'm sorry, we couldn't do that.
Move the town to the fields.
All right. Uh, next is to approve minutes and possible votes, and we have those.
I haven't received the meeting minutes from the fourth yet from Stephanie, so it's still, I want to update on these. December minutes.
Okay.
And exact minutes.
So we can just take care of these.
Have we heard anything in regards to the, um, to our concern regarding the trail project?
I have not gotten any response from the state.
Make a motion that we approve the special agenda meeting minutes of December 20th, 2021?
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Patrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Phone a night. Davis, aye.
Do we need to have roll call votes on things like approving minutes? I don't think we do. Just all in favor or any opposed?
I thought the policy was that if you have members of the board that are in remote participation, it requires every vote is a roll call.
Okay. So we're all roosted back in Douglas, we won't need to do a?
No.
We can get back to the, all those in favor say aye, which we all missed terribly. I'll make a motion that we approve the Tuesday, December twenty-first, 2021 meeting minutes.
Submove. Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
It's Patrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Phone a night.
Make a motion to approve the December twenty-first executive session minutes as well as the January fourth executive session minutes?
And retain.
And retain.
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, always there? No? All right, can I have a roll call vote?
It's Patrick, aye.
Morse, aye.
Phone a night. Davis, aye.
Excellent. Your report, Mr. Administrator.
To go back to testing for a moment for COVID, because it was an important point today. If you are an elder and you are covered by Medicare or by a Medicare supplemental.
I'm losing the audio for Matt. I don't know what, are you capable?
I'll just, I'll pull this closer to me. Can you hear me now?
A little garbled, but.
Can you hear me now? Without Kevin?
Sometimes I do, you, sometimes I don't.
Too easy.
This is like a Verizon camera. Can you hear me now?
You can't hear you.
Good.
Take the other mic.
I think it has the whole deal with directional microphones. Anyway, can you hear me now, Hal?
Yes.
If you are an elder and you are covered by Medicare or by a Medicare supplemental plan, your plan does not cover COVID testing. So I would like to encourage elders to reach out to the Adult Social Center through Patrice Russo if you feel like you want a free test. And rather than waiting in a long queue at the local pharmacy where you may not be able to get one or get one that you can afford, that that was the service that we're trying to provide to seniors. I was talking about insurance and yes, for our actives, it is covered. This is the bizarre world we live in today with policymakers. We want to protect the elderly from COVID because they are a vulnerable group. And yet, the health insurance program that covers them, that is under the control of that branch of government, doesn't pay for the test. Let's go figure. But that's okay, because we're going to order 500 million tests and send them willy-nilly around the country using the postal service. That runs a $300 billion deficit every year because they're so great at what they're doing.
The one guy. K six, R seven main.
They say they can do it. They used to deliver Christmas cards at Christmas time, but now the service has shrunk considerably. So we'll see if they can pull it off. So now I, in digressing, I lose my train of thought. The economic development projects that we're engaged in are now, you know, the rubber's hitting the road. We have lots of bid documents that'll be circulating shortly for different pieces of the construction work. Our supply contract hit a bump in the road because none of the suppliers of ductile iron pipe believes they can meet a deadline in late spring, mid to late spring, which is what we had set in the invitation for bids because we wanted assurances that they could meet our timeline. So we are going to repost the bid. There was no time to amend it. So we're going to repost the bid. We have rejected all bids because all the bids that were made were contingent on an extension of the timeline, which I'm not accepting that. And we are going to phase the delivery requirements so that we get the most critical supply first. So instead of trying to get however many running feet, we're going to focus on that first 2,600 running feet of pipe and the associated fittings to at least connect water from Shell to Skennell. And then we will build back with the rest of the project. But their, their need for live water supply for fire suppression to run their fire pump is in the summer. So we don't really have a lot of time to give these vendors. So while we will rebid it, if we can get at least one of them that says they can bring all the pipe by, by June, July, that's going to be the winner because that's what we need to do to get this moving in the right direction on time. It has been quite the experience already navigating all of the industry ins and outs and listening to them talk about their pricing structures and what they're up against. As for the rest, Bob is here, he's been, or was, he's still here, been working diligently on the EDA application. It is a lengthy and involved application. We're going to get it in by?
I'm hoping next week.
By the end of next week? The goal is to have the review started. So this is a rolling grant. This is a little bit unusual in the world of grants. Usually you have a deadline, they take their sweet time to review and then they have an award. Everybody gets noticed whether they were successful or unsuccessful at the same time, and then you wait till the next year to apply again. EDA grants are quarterly and they are rolling. So there's a deadline every quarter. If you get your application in well before the deadline, it's reviewed. If it's reviewed and approved, the money gets let out and anybody who comes in is late to the party, they don't get it. So that's why we're trying to be well in advance of the March first deadline, to try to get a review by April so that we commit federal funds if they're awarded right away after a notice to proceed after their engineer sends us that magical piece of paper. So that's the goal there. And the application, is it 3.3?
3.3.
3.3 million is the application. I don't know if that's what we'll get, but it's what we're asking for.
Well, the total application is 4.2, 80% is the grant.
So that's what you voted tonight, was for us to commit the funds to match. And that is a part of the application process. The budget. We're entering a period and we've, we've, we've been dealt a bad hand of cards here because we did not have a budget conversation with the board at its last meeting because you were short. You only had three members. Didn't do it tonight because we had this lengthy agenda and executive session to get through. I was supposed to brief FinCom on the overall framework for the budget, but then I was unable to attend the meeting because I was ill. So here we are on January 18th and we haven't begun the conversation about the overall parameters of the budget, which is, it's actually not that late historically. This is pretty much when we do get started, but we kind of missed a couple of weeks. Overall, the process that I am most comfortable with in trying to navigate municipal government, one of the institutional difficulties is the Board of Selectmen as the chief executive takes the town administrator's budget submission. You can adopt it, modify it as such, and then you submit it into the process. But your budget does not go to town meeting. The Finance Committee writes the budget that goes into the warrant for town meeting. So we can all recommend, as much as we want, it's the number that FinCom puts in the budget that is the final budget number. And for the past several years, there hasn't been very much disagreement, nor do I expect there to be a whole lot of disagreement about what those numbers are. But as a municipality develops more budget flexibility and more budget strength, more financial strength, as the town of Douglas has, you begin to face more complicated decisions. The pie has gotten bigger. With all this economic development, the pie will continue to get bigger for several years. And so the question, there is no more important time for people to serve on the Finance Committee and the Select Board of the town of Douglas than these next three to five years. Because the decisions that are made here and that often have a lot of sway at town meeting and are adopted by town meeting, the decisions that town meeting makes for the next three to five years will set the course for the town of Douglas for the next 30. Not exaggerating. I really think that if you look at the way economic development is going, we're not building corporate headquarters anymore because people are going to work from home. We don't manufacture a whole lot in the United States anymore and we don't necessarily have the best location for manufacturing purely per se. But we have a great location for logistical and distribution facilities on the highway. After this burst of activity building out the network of logistical distribution centers, there may not be another wave this big for another decade or 20 years. So the course that the town sets and the way that it funds the services it wants to provide its citizens, if it's based largely on economic development, this is sort of a unique, one-shot opportunity to walk through a wide open door and settle the town's finances and financial strength for the next decade. I think probably 20 years. So having said that, there's a path that a community will follow to size its services appropriately for the daytime population and for the, for the overall service demands of the population going forward as the town grows. Whether it's growing through daytime employment or growing through more people building houses and being here around the clock, more kids in the schools, et cetera, et cetera. And there's a lot of explanation about how you estimate revenues in a budget forecast when the levy itself is going to grow rapidly with new growth that's satisfied each year as a large building adds our building stock, adds to the value of the town. So that's the conversation we're having, not only for this year's budget, but for the next several. Because the decisions we make over the next several months and recommend to town meeting will set the stage for a path that once you're on it, as long as you see those metrics being met, and whether it's the number of calls for service or the amount of time somebody's spending on tasks, blah, 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 as long as you're hitting those milestones and you know that your service demand is growing as you projected it to, you would be on a safe path. And you wouldn't have any need for overrides or extraordinary tension over the way the town raises revenues. So what's most comfortable for me is to arrive at a recommended best estimate for the revenues of the town, to bring to the Select Board, for the Select Board to approve and say, all right, go back, Matt and Gene, go back and present us with a balanced budget that hits that revenue number for your purposes as the chief executive. Finance Committee will go through a process of interviewing all the department heads. And so here's the tension, and I don't like to sidestep it. Anytime there's an elected or appointed, or appointed board that writes a budget that is not the board that sets the policies of the town or that manages the town's day-to-day affairs, there's the potential for disagreement. And it puts, sometimes it puts people in a really difficult situation. When you're budgeting through scarcity and you only have $100,000 to grant all your departments, then nobody's really going to get all fisticuffs about this or that package of resources as they go forward to build their budget. They're going to get pretty much the number they got last year. So they might nip and tuck here and there and ask for something they really desperately need, but for the most part, the task is fairly easy, right? The administrator will agree with the department heads, the department heads and the administrator and the Select Board will persuade FinCom, will go along, will have a nice smooth budget and nobody will raise a hold and it'll pass. If we open the door to the notion that we want our department heads to ask for whatever they need and FinCom will write a budget accordingly, then why, what are we doing? Why would the administrator or Select Board bother? Right? So there has to be a way for us to have an open and transparent process that people can participate in, the department heads are heard, and yet we're not creating this artificial sense of tension going through the budget process where, while he told me he needed 50 grand, now he's in front of FinCom and he says he needs 75. That means my budget is off by 25 grand because I had old information when I submitted my budget. Now he's before FinCom two weeks later and he's got a different idea of what he wants to ask for. Those are the situations we need to try to avoid. My suggestion is I will not finalize my numbers until the Finance Committee has finished interviewing the departments. So I can have a sense, listening to the dialogue between the department heads and Finance Committee, and I get to ask my questions on open session in front of everybody so they can see where my thought process is as the administrator's submitting the budget. And that will probably go further to preserve the consensus that we value so much in the budget process because we're not setting people up against each other. You have people working together in the same meeting. So we're going to bring some of, quite frankly, what is sausage making that used to happen in the course of a couple of meetings in the administrator's office before the budget was submitted, and we'll have some of that sausage making occur in Finance Committee I hope the board agrees that having department heads in to see you and then having them come in again to see FinCom is a lot of wear and tear on our department heads during the winter, and some of them are pulling crazy hours. So two weeks from now, I hope we have a conversation about the budget process now that you've heard where my head is at. I don't really want reaction right away, but let's, two weeks from now, kind of decide on the path for the process, for the budget, so that everybody knows where we are as we progress through things. We have always and will always get some of our most important numbers right at the end of the process, in March, when by then we'll have a health insurance working rate set, we'll hear about our premium increase, and we know it's going to be a big increase for property and casualty insurance, and we can finalize the personnel budget. Those things will all be occurring later in the process. So what we want to focus on upfront is revenues, agreeing that there's a revenue number that we want to try to hit and balance with the budget and then proceed from there. Because once we have that revenue number, we'll know what's available to the department heads to request. That was a long-winded explanation. Are there any questions or concerns or suggestions?
Makes sense.
I agree with that.
Like we might have an embarrassment of riches issue that we never had before.
I'm, I'm sitting here, Hal, thinking the same thing and thinking that's a good problem to have.
Yeah. It's sort of like the lottery and somebody spends all of it quickly. So we, yeah, we need some long-range thinking about what we want to do if we get our targets. Mike?
Yeah, and I think it's a good approach as far as how you, how you deal with assembling your budget through, with the department heads and do have two opportunities to present your, your needs of your department is probably where it opens it up for some changes and that's where the confusion's coming in. So as long as it doesn't slow down the process and make Jean get sleepless nights because she doesn't have the information she needs, I'm all for it.
Want to add anything?
No, good.
Not going to tell me tomorrow you disagree with everything they said?
No, I was the one that got hit in the head.
I could report all night, but it's 8:30, I think. I've given you quite a bit to chew on.
I, you know, I agree. This is, you know, every year you sell the budget and we wait for those big numbers.
Can't sit in the back anymore, Gene. It's budget season. You gotta get up to a microphone.
I have to keep my distance. No crying in baseball either. Now, I agree. We are always under this, this time where we have to wait for the big numbers. BBT, Worcester Regional, property liability, health insurance. I think what you're saying is that you're going to delay submitting something to the Finance Committee and have the departments present more of a theory about their budget. So no actual document, budget document will be presented from the department to the FinCom for them to review. Is that what I'm getting?
I'm having a hard time.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we have, the police chief is scheduled to go before the FinCom the first meeting in February. So is he just going to talk in theory about his department and not have any hard numbers to present to the Finance Committee? Or is-
So I don't like the idea of theory, right? So he would say, this is what I'd like to do this year. I'd like to buy bulletproof vests because they're expensive, right? I like to buy sidearms. I want to do this, I want to do this, and I'm going to do this, if the money's available. And I've estimated professionally, my cost for those items would be this. Then we could ask questions back and forth. Well, when's the last time you did the replacement? You know, all the kind of questions you almost do with a capital project. So when's the last time, you know, what's the need for this? Is there an NFPA code? Is it going to expire? You're going to be running around with expired stuff? Just to get a sense of how urgent is the need that's being brought up? And then hopefully the process moves along quickly enough where there's a couple of meetings left where you can say, all right, we've heard from all the department heads, this is how much extra revenue the Select Board assigned for the purposes of compensation and expenses on the municipal side of the budget. And you've heard requests for some amount of money that's probably going to be larger than the amount of money that's available. That's when I would present a budget and I would say, these are the priorities. And I'd probably present my budget to the Select Board before I did this to FinCom, but I would present a budget to the Select Board for the Select Board's review and say, this is why I prioritized these buckets of spending over these to arrive at a balanced budget. And that way, people, it's all in the public record. People can see what was asked for because it's in a FinCom meeting. And then I'd parse through it rather than trying to, you know, throw 20 to this guy and 30 to this, this other department and another 45 to that one. Like when we score capital projects, there's got to be some pecking order in terms of what's the most essential thing that really needs to be taken care of right away versus what can wait another fiscal year before we resolve it. And not this overall sense. I've always been opposed to the sweeping rules. Well, we just got to give everybody, you know, some pro-rata share of new revenues. Well, that may not, it may not be a good solution for the town at all. It may make the department heads feel okay because they know with regularity and certainty what their share is going to be. But what if they need something that's way more expensive than their share? In particular, a good example is what if the fire chief knows he needs to go up and buy a whole rack of hose? That's a really expensive thing. He may never get that much money in any year's formula allocation, but he needs it right away. So we, we've got to have a process that takes that into consideration. I know that there's energy on the FinCom that wants to see hard numbers right away and, and it's just I resist that almost as much as I resist budget books because I'm not going to have the information I need to make trade-offs as the administrator until all those numbers that you just outlined came in. So dollars to donuts, we are going to look at a massive increase in the property casualty insurance premium this year, relatively speaking. Relative to its base, it's probably going to go up 12%, 15%, which could be 100, 150,000. What are we supposed to do with that? If the total new revenue available to us is 300,000 and we know we're going to give close to half of that to the schools, then what are we left with if property and casualty absorbs almost all the rest? That's a, I don't want to pre-commit to department heads, oh yeah, yeah, you definitely need those three people. So we'll put them in the budget. And the health insurance number comes in and it's a double-digit increase. Oh, sorry. You don't get those people. It's just, it's all over the map. It'd be better to just put all the issues out there and then say, when we get to that point where we have all the numbers we need, or we can at least estimate with reasonable proximity what those numbers are going to need to be in the budget. Then we'll go back through the things that people say they need and try to sort it out.
And I think that's my message to the departments and to, I had to talk with the chair. I agree. I think there's a lot of times just spinning your wheels, waiting for information to come in. I think, in my opinion, it's retraining the Finance Committee to not look for that information on day one, to hear the stories I use from the department saying, this is what I'm doing. This is what I need. This is what's not been covered previously. And get them to think of it a little differently. Because I agree, we are waiting for those big numbers and they're big numbers. They're not, you know, it's not, you know, my department's increase. They're big numbers. And they can just throw a wrench into the entire budget.
It's difficult to try and put together a budget without understanding revenue. But having a firm glass one, well, everybody has this much money that's a debit.
The revenue is not the issue all. It's not the revenue piece because we pretty much have a handle on that at the, at the end of January. That's typically, that's just in line. Once the governor's numbers go out, we've been typically using House One. We use that going forward. We increased estimated receipts by 2%. There has been some allocation to the increase in Building Department as a separate because it's not going to be reoccurring. As you just said, it's going to max out over a certain period of years, so that will go away. It's not the revenue piece. It's those big ticket items on the expenditure side. BBT, Worcester Regional, property and liability, health insurance. That's what throws the budget. And those numbers don't come in until the end of February, beginning of March. So I, I agree with the approach. I think it's going to take some retraining and, and some patience on the Finance Committee. I think Lisa and I went over the budget schedule today. We do have your presentation to the board first because I think the board should vote on it before the Finance Committee gets it. So we have that in that order. So we should be all set with that. But I think you may have, I could be wrong, some resistance because they're going to be looking for that document to look at when they come. You know, Adam's the perfect example. What's important in Adam's budget is not the numbers we've been giving him for the last five years. It's that list of what needs to be completed in the buildings that we all work in. And what has he done? What does he need to do? And that's something that benefits all of the employees. You know, whether it's this building, highway, fire, library. You know, look at his list. That's, that to me tells the story for the public building maintenance. So I, I'm not in disagreement. I just think it's going to need patience on everybody's part to just not do what we've always done and look for that same document.
And I agree with what Gene said. Initially, there'll be a little resistance and confusion over the process, but I think once it goes through, it's a much healthier process. Because Matt has intimate knowledge of what all the departments need, probably more so than the Finance Committee would be exposed to. And if he, he's able to question and talk to about their needs and their wants in front of the Finance Committee, it'd probably make it a lot easier for them to make a sound decision on what they're going to put forward.
And the other piece is capital. You know, that's a, that's a big piece too, when you guys start meeting.
Anything else?
That's all, sir.
I had, I, to be honest with you, I had a hard time with that audio. I'm going to have to go back and watch. Particularly with Gina, not that you, I'm sure you didn't, you weren't heard by the people in the room. They just didn't hear you. So I want to go back and listen to it and kind of digest it myself.
Sorry, Tim.
I'm in the same boat.
We're still having issues with the via.
I don't know what you're saying.
So I think you need one of those magical motions, Mr. Chairman.
Tim, you're up.
Can you do one of your famous motions, sir?
See, you're breaking up there too. Are you doing this back in the selectmen's room?
Yeah, we're going to call you, I think.
Yeah, we'll-
Yeah, we'll call you.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted, is a phone call. All right, so with that, I'd make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of interest in real property, investigation and litigation, and then to leave executive session for the purpose of chairman.
Second. I'll second that crystal clear motion.
Fitzpatrick guy.
Moore's aye.
Bone and I. Dave is aye.